My name is Brian Chapman. I'm the project manager for the project to be presented this evening. I'm assigned to the project management section of Mastaut's Highway Division Headquarters in Boston. I was directed by Chief Engineer Patricia Levinberg to conduct tonight's hearing. This is a two-phase project. First, we will be presenting Phase Three. And that's Mastaut presenting Phase Three. And then the city will present Phase Two. So if you want to stay for both phases, please stay for Phase Two when we're finished here. On the end is Imogene Hatch from Brown Richardson and Rowe. Nina Brown is also from Brown Richardson and Rowe. John Hederson from Phase Spofford and Thorne Dyke. Mike Papadopoulos from Mastaut's Project Management Section. Bill Travis from Mastaut's District Five Office. David Fraser is of Arlington Typing and Mailing. He'll be making a verbatim transcript of tonight's hearing. Don Oliver and Linda Walsh are from Mastaut's Right-Away Bureau.
My function is to review and recommend procedures that the municipality will utilize and inquire in these rights. The procedures used must comply with both federal and state regulations. The current design plans indicate that there are two fee acquisitions and/or permanent easements required, and that other areas may require temporary construction easements and/or rights of entries.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for coming out to hear about the project. We're really excited about it, and we hope that you enjoy hearing where the design and the development has led us. This is just a brief little description of what our slide will be. We've sort of gone over most of this. We're going to go through the project overview, design elements, furnishings, amenities, and plantings, and then the bridge and the trail design. We'll talk a little bit about the project schedule, and then we'll open it up to questions and comments. The project team, as you know, is a diverse group of individuals all working hard to bring this project together, including the City of Fall River, Mastaut, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And then there's the design team, Brown Richardson and Rowe, Phase Spofford and Thorne Dyke, Surveying and mapping consultants, SMC, and LEC Environmental Consultants. So as we've said just briefly, there are two phases to the overall vision of this project. There's Phase Two, which we'll be talking about after this official hearing is complete. And the one that we're going to focus on right now is Mastaut Phase Three, which is approximately 3,300 linear feet. It's from roughly Quikashan Street to Brighton Avenue, connecting to the existing path that ends at Brighton Avenue right now, which is technically Phase One. There are two proposed bridges within Phase Three. And like I said, it connects Phase Two, which will be built as part of a city project, and the previously constructed Phase One. And there is a $1.4 million construction cost estimate associated with Phase Three. But this is roughly the area that we're talking about for the overall vision. The green line down in the right-hand corner of the image is the Phase One portion. Blue is Phase Three, which is what we're going to be talking about in detail in just a second. And Phase Two is shown in orange. So like I said, the Phase Three project limits extend from roughly Quikashan Street, which you can see right up here, to Brighton Avenue. So when we first started looking at the design for the rail-trail conversion, we sort of looked at some of the existing elements within Fall River and this corridor in particular, some of the industrial elements, some of the natural wetlands that exist along the corridor, and some of the history of what the corridor has been used for in the past and how that has shaped what it is now. There are some existing, like I mentioned, wetland elements and industrial elements that we're sort of drawing upon here. We developed a logo and a branding together with various individuals in the city and project team members, coming up with a sort of sense of identity for the trail. And then we started looking at some of the more specific design elements that would go along the trail, a little bit more on the landscape, furnishing, amenities side of things. We worked with that sort of more industrial theme that I talked about before, something overscaled, large, very sturdy, very durable materials. So these are the benches that have been selected. They include very solid, like I said, sturdy, replaceable bench slots out of epay wood and solid steel metal components. This is a little bit more of what they would look like scale-wise in situ. And at some of the entries, namely further along the trail, there will be some custom fencing that's designed, utilizing reclaimed rail segments from the trail, as well as solid granite posts and a woven wire steel mesh in between, sort of trying to create that sense of identity and durability, and also sort of bringing elements of design and intention to the entries. This is an image of some of the trail signs that we're putting together, sort of "You Are Here" mapping, so that folks will be able to locate themselves, locate how long it might take them to get from one place to another on the trail, where they could get to on the trail if you're standing in one spot. Can I get over to Rodman Street from here? And then there will also be, this same sort of style will be used for some interpretive panels, talking about history, ecology, located in different spots along the trail. And then there's also some location markers that'll tell you when you've gotten to certain entry points and intersections along the trail. If you take a left here, you'll head down towards Britlin Park. If you take a right here, you'll go towards Quikashan Street. Again, those are all using solid granite, so talking about some very durable, long-lasting, permanent, but, you know, classic design. The plantings, selection criteria, we were looking at for plantings, colorful, natural, yet easy to maintain, party and disease resistant, adaptable to the local environment, and promoting wildlife habitat, utilizing native plantings wherever that is feasible for the environmental conditions that we're trying to plant within. So these are some of the trees that have been selected for the project. As you can see, a lot of them are on the native side, and they do, like I said, provide a lot of habitat, a lot of fall color, spring color, that should be nice and diverse for the trail users. And then here are some of the shrubs. John is going to talk, I'm going to introduce John Hederson from Phase Spofford and Thorne Dyke, who is going to talk about some of the engineering sides to the bridges and the trail.
Thanks, Imogene. Now that Imogene has finished talking about all the pretty stuff along the trail, I'd like to talk about the actual design of the trail and the bridges. The bridges are actually boardwalks, but we do all the bridges. And then after that, I'd like to actually show you photos of the existing trail, just so you know where it's going. The first step we did was a geotechnical program. We actually took borings at all six bridges along the trail. There's two bridges in this section, but we took borings along all six bridges, so we could determine the type of foundation that we would need. At the beginning of this project, we were hoping that we could reuse the existing boardwalks or bridge trusses. You know, we said, wow, they've been there for 150 years, they hold up the train, they should be able to hold up a bike path. Unfortunately, we actually did a study back in the day when they did Creosoting, they only dipped the wood into Creosota, and only the outside got covered. Today, if you get a pressurized piece of wood, it's all the way through. But back in the day, it was only covered on the outside. So if you look at this picture, you can see where the wood is rotted out. And unfortunately, throughout the entire trail, this is the case. And unfortunately, again, we were not able to reuse the existing wooden trusses. So what we are proposing to do is put a wooden boardwalk. The next three slides are actually engineering drawings, and I do have photos afterwards. So if it's tough to read these, I will show photos. But the boardwalk itself has a 12-foot wide clear deck. The wood is epay on the deck and on the handrails. The only metal is the helical foundation screws, which are shown on the bar on the slide. And we are using these screws because they are environmentally sensitive. They really just screw right into the ground, and you don't impact the wetlands. This would be an elevation or looking at it from the side. As you can see, we do have two railings, and we have a mesh over the railings, which we showed a photo of. We also have, on every other beam, we have a 45-degree angle pile, destined for more support for the bridge. And we should say that these bridges will be supporting, and this is the maintenance vehicles. And this would be a plan view of the boardwalk. It's almost similar to if you were putting a deck in your backyard, and you have the deck on top and the beams underneath. So this is a photo of a recently constructed boardwalk on the Al Whitebrook Parkway, and it is Al Whitebrook Trail. And as you can see, the epay wood is on the deck and on the handrails. So this is extremely similar to what the boardwalks will look like after, once we're complete. This is a picture of an existing boardwalk out in Salisbury. It won't look like this, but I did want to show the railing, if you look on the right side. Because of requirements of a bridge/boardwalk, we can only allow a six-inch gap any place along the trail, so that kids don't get stepped in the railing. So instead of putting an almost solid board down the handrail, we're putting a mesh fence, so that when you walk along the trail, you'll actually be able to see through the fence, see the water, see the grasses, and see everything. So we felt that it was a much better design. And this would be the elevation view that I showed. You can see the aisles going down, the 45-degree angle, helical screws going into the ground. And this is a photo underneath. Again, you can see the 45-degree beams, every other post, and the horizontal ones going Now, on the trail itself, the trail will be 10-foot wide with two meters of concrete. It will be sloped one way, so that the drains will sheet off of the trail one way. We will have three-foot shoulders on each side, which are basically grass drifts. So if you happen to ride your bike off the trail, you'll have three feet to recover and not hit a tree or not hit a post or anything like that. So you have three feet on the side to recover and to get back on the trail, and that will be grass. And then we have an additional five feet where we are planning to take out dead trees, limbs, or anything else that will impact the trail. And this is a photo of the trail, actually out on the, along the Pinnons out there today. Now, I'll show you photos along the corridor. If you go to page eight in your handout, it shows a map of the corridor. So I will be going from Quikashan Street, and I will be going towards the east. So the first item that would come on is the ramp to 24. This trail goes under I-195, two ramps to 24. Actually, the, you know, the city is separated by 195. Unfortunately, with Rodman Street connection, we had to connect this to both sides of 195. So as you can see, the ramp to 24 is the first bridge, and the second bridge is the 195 bridge. This shows a picture from the opposite angle. The 195 bridge will have lighting underneath it, and it's going out at the trail, under dusk facility, so that the lighting will be on just during the day, but will not be on at night. The next thing we'll come across is the bridge over marsh wetlands. We're assuming back 100 years ago when they built this, this was probably out of the river, but it has been filled in with wetland plants. So we will be putting a boardwalk at this location. And this gives you kind of a cross-section of what the boardwalk will look like. You can see up on top is an actual photo of an existing boardwalk, and we placed it over the plan that we have. You can see the helical screws on the bar into the foundations. And as we go along further, we go on another ramp to 24, we go underneath this. And then the trail comes right up against the parking lot of Clover Leaf Office Park. This would be a great spot for them to go out on lunch, they'll be able to walk all the way down to Wetuppa Pond to all the way into Britlin Park. And this is an overview of Phase Three and the context of the city. You can see the dash line to the right would be the Phase One, which is already constructed, and to the left would be the Phase Three project. I'm sorry, Phase Two project. Now, further down, we're crossing Brighton Ave. As you follow the orange line down, if we were to continue that design, it would be a severe angle on Brighton Ave, which would take the people walking in on bikes too long to cross. So the best situation is to actually cross them at 90 degrees. So we follow the shoulder of Brighton Ave, and we actually cross at 90 degrees and meet the existing trail. At this location, we are proposing to have a push-button pedestrian signal. As you probably all know, the vehicles here go 55 miles an hour. There's two lanes of traffic, and the sight distance is really poor. So at this location, we will have, you will stop, push a button, and the light will actually go to red. And this is a landscape plan of the same location. If you're coming down from the left down to the right, we actually put an S curve in, and that's to slow down the people on the bikes. So when they come to the stop at Brighton Ave, they'll be going slow. You can see we have landscape implants throughout this section of the trail. And this is the trail terminus. You probably mostly have walked it, it's a beautiful walk, and we will actually meet at this particular location. Now, the project schedule, they've talked about the right-of-way, appraisal, and process. Final design plans. For this particular section of the trail, we will have completed the 100% plans by the end of this week. And then there's Mast D O T will then review those plans. So it should be 100% complete by the end of this week. What we will do is take on any comments that we do receive tonight and incorporate them into those plans. We're also submitting the notice of intent shortly to the Conservation Commission. Obviously, this is a very environmentally sensitive area, so we do have to do a notice of intent. We also have to do an environmental notification form, or E N L, which goes to MEPA. And then, as mentioned before, construction is anticipated in the fall of 2015. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Imogene.
It is a normal procedure to ask elected officials to offer their comments first. Are there any federal, state, or local officials who would like to speak at this time? The hearings, if there are no elected officials, the hearing is now open to the public, and we welcome your questions or comments. Yes, sir.
Rick Schwartz, I'm part of the forum Bicycle Committee, and I'm also a generic answer very real people, real men. Many questions. First of all, who's going to maintain the bushes once they're planted? You're saying we've got all these beautiful bushes and everything else, which I think is an overkill to begin with, but who's going to be maintaining it once these are planted? That bothers me. Number two, how high is the fence rail going to be? The schematic showed anywhere between three feet to eight feet. I'm curious, actually, the, over the bridges, how high is that going to be?
The fence should be three feet, six inches.
Three feet, six inches? The schematics are three to eight.
But there's actually a design standard for railings on the trail itself and railings on the bridge.
Okay. Also, how many seconds are we going to be allowed to cross Brighton Avenue? I've been at many intersections where you get halfway through and the light's already against you.
We have timed that, because of the length of that, we have timed it so that you can walk the entire length from one side to the other, and you don't have to...
The entire length, or do you have to go halfway and then press the button again?
We have done it so you can do the entire length, timing-wise.
Will there be a secondary button in the middle?
Yes.
The other problem that I see is the deck. The decks look beautiful. How, but what bothers me is you're saying three to 5% slope, which I understand, reasonable. How slippery is that going to be when it is wet?
The bridges themselves are at 0%.
Bridges themselves, zero?
0% profile and 0% grade. So we actually designed them so they're flat.
All right. That's a misunderstanding when I heard it. So the bridges are flat, the roadway, which is asphalt, I assume...
Yes.
...will have a 3% to 5% grade?
It will have a cross slope of 2%.
2%.
And the maximum on the profile, I don't think we go over 1%, but there might be some places we go 2%.
Even that, sometimes bicycling, at different speeds could be hazardous. That's why I was questioning.
Right.
I would have questioned.
They do allow, by ADA code, up to 5%.
5%. That's what I thought.
Right.
Thank you.
And as to the plantings, the City of Fall River is responsible for, oh, sorry, the City of Fall River will be, as the owner, will be responsible for maintenance of...
Well, not being technical, would that be the public works leading Park Department?
Yeah. But right now, the portion of where the bike path is running belongs to the Mast D O T Rail Division.
All right.
And the plan is that this portion will be transferred or leased or given a permanent easement to the City of Fall River. And from that point after, the City of Fall River will assume responsibility of maintaining the bike path.
Okay.
We should point out, many, many, many trails, friends of the trail groups have been born that do the maintenance for the city, and that happens on quite a few streets.
That I've seen too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Hi, Brian Pearson, also with the forum Bicycle Committee. Listening to the beginning, we were talking about the right-of-ways, and I was wondering, first of all, is there any problems, or how's the right-of-way coming?
The right-of-way is coming along fine. The reason that Don and I are both here is there's actually municipal right-of-way impacts, which mean the requirements will be responsibility of the city. Generally, those are on land that's not owned by the state, although, you know, we are acquired, they will be acquiring the permanent easement from the Rail Division for the construction of the project. Don is here because in the area of the bridges, that's state highway layout, and so there'll be a need for some alterations to the access lines in that area. So that will also be handled through our state highway section.
So is there any unforeseen holdups, or is there anything, or is everything going smoothly with the right-of-ways?
Well, I can't speak for the city on where they are at, but we have been meeting with them. Things do seem to be progressing along. Everybody's working cooperatively with one another, so I anticipate that things will progress.
One other question, I noticed, there's a new layout. Before, there was going to be a bridge, like overhang, when you came off of Brighton Avenue over the south of Wetuppa. That's gone, which I'm very glad to see. Did that help reduce the cost of the project?
It helped reduce it quite a bit.
Yeah. Okay. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Your comment where you're saying there's going to be a stoplight, Tony Dias, a citizen. At the Brighton Avenue crossover, you had mentioned that potentially people will be at the island if they happen to leave when it says three seconds left to be able to cross. Have you calculated potentially how many bicyclers could be within that island space?
No, we haven't, to be honest with you. But it's made so that people will come up, push a button, wait, and it says actually on the sign, wait for signal to turn red, then cross. So it's made for them to go all the way across.
Right. But my concern is that group that's coming at the very end of that, they're going to decide to go, and they're going to get caught in the middle.
Right.
And they usually like to ride in groups.
Right.
How many people would fit in that island? Because that's only like four feet, five feet wide.
No, the actual island, we pushed it back from where it originally was, so the island where we cross is between 12 and 15 feet. So we do have more room. The island you're talking about is where the left turn lane is, and that is like three feet.
Yeah, I was talking about the space in between north versus south or east-west, whatever it is, the traffic median.
Medium, so that's approximately 12...
Is it right here?
Yes.
So that's the, oh, in between?
In between, yes.
So that's 10 feet wide.
10 feet wide.
Right, yeah. And about 12 feet in length, I guess we call it.
And my last question is, is it basically the budget isn't allowing for a pedestrian bridge to go over it?
Pedestrian? Pedestrian bridge over the island?
The entire roadway, because, I mean...
That would be one concern, but the other is Wetuppa Pond is on the other side, so it would be a huge environmental impact. But that would, that bridge, my sense would be costing $1 million, probably more, probably between $1 and $1.5 million. That would be very expensive. And we feel that this is a, you know, safe condition with the stoplight.
The entrances to the bike path, are they going to be inside? Is that the concern, the vandalism, that they're inside? It'd probably be better if they are outside of the entrances.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. Do we know what they're going to do?
You wanted to answer that first?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know you had others. Oh, no, the benches, there aren't actually benches located at the Phase, along the Phase Three segment of the trail. In Phase Two, there are some benches, and they're located just inside the trail. They're literally about 10 feet from the sidewalk.
So is this Phase Three, or is it part of Phase Two?
Two.
Two, so I can't say my question then.
There'll be time later, though.
A question, Evan, I didn't understand. You said, I realize we're only talking about Phase Three, but you mentioned Phase Two construction. Would you say what you just said slowly, so I could pick it up?
Phase Two and Phase Three are likely to be built at around the same schedule, around the same time.
I think I heard this far.
Yep.
That was approval. I just have, on the plantings, we have, I'm sure you've consulted with folks, a wonderful tree lady in town. The area itself, and I have walked all of that, all of the place you're going to build, is quite wild. I hope you would keep it that way as much as you possibly could.
Absolutely, yeah. There are a lot of invasive species currently on the trail, so there will be some removal of some of the invasives.
Right. And it's very hard, because, for example, clover is an invasive species.
Oh.
So it's very hard to, I know what you're talking about, and some of them, there probably is one in there, but I don't know what it is.
I don't see one. I think you're okay.
What I'm getting at is, now, this, now, what about parking? The land, is there any, is there going to have any parking lots along the trail?
There are no parking lots planned at this point.
The reason for that is it's very, there's not a lot of land area.
Yeah, that's right.
So it needs to be conserved as much as possible. Okay, that's...
We fully agree.
Rolling on. When you walk under the tunnels, it is quite dark. These are the two tunnels that, you said you were going to turn the tunnels off at 4:30 around December 22, which is when it gets dark.
That was remarkably precise of us.
Well, I just, see, I cycle, and I know when I have to put my lights, I know when I'm supposed to put lights on my bicycle. And I'm wondering, that seems a little early. It will be in the winter, but these will also be transportation routes to and from work. And those tunnels are, if you go alone, they're actually a little scary.
Yes.
I'm wondering, could be anything like a, like a motion switch or anything like that that would help you, would help that problem?
I don't know. Well, the rule on bikeways is the same with untaxed, it's dawn to dusk. And you don't want, you do not want to give people an impression that the trail is lit and it's safe, because if you're a mile down the trail, you know, you're out there by yourself, even though it's lit and you see everything, you know...
Actually, you're not necessarily going to solve it with someone else. What I'm saying is, is that the, if I were to say you, it might get, it gets pretty dark inside that tunnel at dusk.
Yes.
And just, if there's anything you can do, do it. I realize you seem like you're dealing with a rule, like a dawn to dusk.
Right. And they will be triggered by light sensors. It's not a timer, it's a light sensor.
So when the light level gets to a certain...
But there's no motion. Okay.
Yeah. So when it starts to get dark enough that it triggers, triggers the light to turn off, it'll do that. I know it seems opposite, we're turning the lights off when it gets dark, but that'll be the light outside of the tunnel, when it gets dark enough outside, then the lights will not turn on.
Right. I'm also aware, this is not simply the bicycle route. This is a walking route for people who go to work and so forth. And it most, you know, it sounds like it's cutting off a little early. That's, and those two tunnels are the difficult places, that's...
Yes, I agree.
I just want to say a few words about Phase Two and the overall project on behalf of both the Commonwealth and the City of Fall River. We have been working for quite some time now with the City of Fall River Mayor Flanagan and representatives of the administration here to first decide...
and representatives of the administration here to first decide on this project and to carry it forward. There, believe it or not, are quite a few background steps that go forward to getting this project to this stage. Been working with the design team you've already heard from, from Browder, Sunnam Row, and Facebo, from Thorndike, the engineers, to move this project forward. There was a lot going into figuring out the route, figuring out the viability of some of the infrastructure associated with the project. And really pleased to have reached this point, yet another milestone in the process of getting this project to happen. So the overall project, as I think you know, is about 1.4 miles of conversion of the former Watupa Secondary rail line, basically from the end of Phase One, near Watupa Pond and the Advanced Materials Center, through to basically Britland Park and Plymouth, almost to Plymouth Avenue, along with some spur connections to Rodman Street. The project as a whole is being paid for from two sources you've just heard about, the so-called Phase Three, the portion paid for with funding from the transportation sources, and that's being advanced by my colleagues from the Mass Department of Transportation. Phase Two, on the other hand, is being paid for through the program I manage, Gateway City Parks at Energy and Environmental Affairs. That portion basically runs from Britland Park and the, that portion, the western portion of the project in the City of Fall River, through to the end of the Phase Three project that you just heard about, basically connecting all of this. The project, as you can see, is in design permitting as well, and we are looking forward to actually building this project in the near future. My office, Energy and Environmental Affairs, has set aside funds for the purchase of some of the land interests that we need in order to build this, and also for the construction of the Phase Two portion of the project. I think both Mayor Flanagan and the administration are very happy to be working on this. You, you should be expecting a more formal announcement of the project in the relatively near future. We started to work on an event beyond a public hearing like this to, to make the project known and to, to publicize the investment being made by all of the parties moving this project forward. I think that's probably enough. I'm going to obviously be here with the rest of the project team to answer questions, but on behalf of the city and the state, we're really pleased to be moving this on.
Me too. So Phase Two is approximately 4,900 linear feet in total, so substantially longer than Phase Three, because it includes the connection from Britland Park to Quikashan Street, as well as the spur that goes down towards Rodman Street, thereby connecting that section of the city north or, did you say north or west at that point? Northwest. Yeah, northwest, that handles it, up to Britland Park underneath 195, which has not been possible previously. There are five proposed bridges in this section of the project, and as mentioned, anticipated construction bidding could happen as early as this fall, with construction likely to begin either late fall or spring. And there is $3.9 million construction cost estimate for Phase Two. Significant, significant section of construction. Starting Britland Park, connecting to Quikashan Street at the end of Phase Three, and the spur from Rodman Street up to the main trail. These are just some, some, some of the things I just talked about, including the, the Rodman Street connection underneath Route 195, yeah, over bridge number two, back to bridge number three, which I'll talk about in a bit, but these are some of the bridges that we're talking about. Some of these are quite long in here, boardwalks, there will be, and then this is a very short little segment that'll go over the existing canal at the edge of Britland Park to connect the trail to Britland. So as you, as many of you have probably observed, Fall River has been involved in making some significant improvements to Britland Park through a grant that was received, a park grant, grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The improvements were made during the fall of 2012 into spring of this year. They included a turf, an artificial turf soccer field, as well as actually this pavement is, this rendering is a little out of date, but this pavement was taken out. And the trail along the bottom here will connect up to our trail, and then there's another little piece of cement that comes to the entrance of Britland Park. So, in other words, the, the connection to Britland Park is an important one for us and for our trail, we feel, because it's really developing that extension of green space that we really feel that the city will benefit from. So these are some of the, the highlighted landscape areas that we have developed along, along the trail. Many of you who were here at the previous public information meeting probably already saw some of the develop, some of the plans that we had for these areas, including the Britland Park connection, what we're entitling the overlook, which is essentially space to stop, rest, take a moment, observe the scenery, gather with a friend. And then down here, the Rodman Street entry and the Quikashan Street entry, these are sort of two main trailheads. So this is basically what the Rodman Street entry would look like. There's a significant amount of, of ceremony here with some bike racks, benches. This is where the decorative fence will be, which you see over here, the entry fence. And then there's also a trail sign, which is actually up at this location now. So this is the custom fencing that we talked about before. This will be all along the, the road at, at Rodman Street. It sort of goes this way, and then this way. And it sort of wraps around. So this is, again, some, some bikes and some seating available there. There's another trail sign, you are here map. This is another location where we have some of those granite location markers telling you what street you're turning to and what direction you should go. And John will talk about the traffic crossing a little bit later on for Quikashan Street in our presentation. This is again, sort of what it looks like today, rendering of more like what it'll look like when, when the job is complete, which is actually going to be interpreted at this place. This is a section where we'd like to rebuild some of the existing rail there, leave it in place so that people can see and sort of envision in their minds what was there that you are now riding and walking and running on. And talk a little bit about what that history has been and has meant to this corridor. And then there's, you know, a space for some benches, gathering, seating, and some plantings to just make it a pleasant place to be. And again, this is sort of what we're talking about as a before, and more what it would look like after. Again, the benches, and John?
Well, the trail design in Phase Two is pretty much the same as on Phase Three, so I'll concentrate on the bridges and the crossing at Quikashan Street. As Imogen mentioned, there's five bridges along this section of the corridor. The first bridge is at this canal. To the right is Britland Park, and so to connect to Britland Park, we had to go over this open channel. So we will put, be putting a new foundation behind the stone walls of this, of, I guess it's a channel, and then the bridge will be on top of that. This is the bridge for the railroad spur from Rodman Street. Some of you might know, this did catch on fire a while ago, but this would be the connection to Rodman Street. This is bridge number three, which is at a, pretty much a B with the bridge that I just showed you. And this is actually the deck over Bridge Street. As you can see on the right, they, back in when they did have the railroad, they, they built a walkway next to it so you could walk up and down the, the tracks if there was a train parked there. And we think back in the day that, you know, they probably did park trains here. The, the station is a little bit further down on Plymouth Street, so we think that they did might have parked some, some more trains here. And this is bridge number four. You can see they're all similar, they all look the same, they're all trestle bridges. And this is the graphic we showed before, with a proposed deck on top, and a complete wooden structure with the helical screw foundation, similar to before. This is an existing trail section, which Imogen showed, and this would be what it would look like again with the proposed trail. Bridge number five, believe it or not, is over 500 feet. And this is looking the opposite way. And again, you can see the, the walkway to the left. And now, Quikashan Street, we are proposing F-curves going into Quikashan Street, so it will slow down the people on the bikes. The signal on the right is where we showed at our last public information meeting, and there were a lot of concerns about how we were treating this in the section. So what we have proposed is a new pedestrian signal. As you see on the photo on the right, this one happens to be solar panel. There will be two signs, and then the bar rated by the arrow is a flashing LED light similar to what's on top of a police car. It's that visible. The light will go back and forth, back and forth. And as you can see, you have to stop, you push the button, and this light will flash back and forth, back and forth. Again, similar to what a police car lights up. The compliance rate of vehicles traveling on a road is approximately 80%, so about 80% of the time, when a vehicle sees these lights, they will stop allegedly. The one on the right is, I actually took the picture of the Top Trail, if you've been to the Top Trail Fair, this is on Route 1, right at Top Trail Fair. I, I rode my bike in, have driven my cow over this. Every time I've gone over, cars have stopped, cars actually stopped even when I didn't push the light. And then when I'm driving down the street, the, the light is visible from almost a football field away. It was really a bright light. And that pretty much concludes Phase Two.
I don't see any line markings down the bike path, and any shadows showing people which way to walk. But is that going to be, or is that going to be an afterthought?
No, the, on, except for urban bikeways, such as the Minuteman, most bikeways do not have a pavement marking down the middle. It takes away from the rural character of the trail. The only place we actually do have...
Bristol Bike Path has it.
Right. Well, we feel that this doesn't warrant it based on the number of people that will be out there. So the only place we do show pavement markings is when you approach Quikashan Street right now. So there will be a, a, what, solid white, solid white lines for about 100 feet.
It was just on the Cape Cod one, and that had it too, but that's interesting. The Gateway Phase, is that Bristol area, or what, which area is the Gateway, your section?
Bristol, you mean which section is Phase Two?
No, no, no. Gateway is paying for the, for cleaning this, you said?
Right.
Who is Gateway?
Oh, okay.
Don't even phrase it that way.
The Gateway City Parks Program is a program run by the State's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It was created through the 2008 Environmental Bond Bill. This particular administration, Patrick administration, wanted to basically have a program that could spend more money on parks in urban neighborhoods. They really felt we were underinvesting in parks, trails, in urban settings such as the City of Fall River, and really wanted to have a program focused specifically on that. And so that, that's the origin of the program. It's essentially state bond money coming to you through the State's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Okay, thank you. One other question, and I'll try to leave it for others. I noticed Rodman Street, you are going to go into Rodman Street that way. What's to prevent cars from blocking the entrance?
Blocking the entrance? Oh, you mean if they're parking along Rodman Street?
Exactly.
There is a curb cut there, because that will be an access point for emergency vehicles. So it'll be marked as a no parking zone, similar to any driveway.
Okay, so it will be marked, unlike veterans, veteran, coming off the veteran bridge, which is not properly marked.
It will actually be an access, so if you're driving your bike, you'll be able to turn into this access, so don't hesitate to drive one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, David Antor, City Council. In anticipation that you might need additional funding at some point, it might, it might move you to make a presentation before the City Council at some point, understanding that it's a public hearing and you think there will be public interest. Fortunately, not everybody gets up to these meetings with councils, but it might be, it might be in your interest to come to the City Council sooner rather than later and make a full presentation. I'm not sure, again, that's what you call it, your own, but I'm not sure the vast majority of people in the City of Fall River can understand and or appreciate the amount of effort, time, and money that's being put into this really significant project with how it will transform that whole Quikashan area. So one of the other venues that you might want to utilize is, is to come before the City Council, attracts a whole different group of folks, and I think that you might get a lot more public interest, or different kind of public interest with the City Council. I'd be glad to help you with that if you'd like.
So what, are you saying, John, that the urban bike paths don't have the strapping?
No, the, the rural bike paths don't. For example, we designed the Cape Cod Rail Trail, and there isn't pavement markings on the Cape Cod Rail Trail. There isn't.
I, I live in Fairhaven, and there is. And that's pretty rural. And I guess, I just, I guess what I'm thinking of is issues around the fact that it's two-way traffic.
Right.
That there are walkers that were trying to, you know, create social norms where people are respectful for one another and polite and do the right thing. But there, sometimes there are ways that that can be helped along, such as delineating that this is a two-way traffic, or, you know...
Or sign.
Stick to the right, inner walkers to the right, or whatever. So, just to bring that up again.
To educate the people that are walking or riding that.
Yeah.
Well, you're right, they do have educational signs with pedestrians, pedestrians, and bicycles, so I guess we could put a couple of those up.
I would, it would be appreciated.
I mean, it's a great idea. I'm frankly, as I'm also a member of the bike committee, forward bike committee, and I have experience of riding in Florida where there, unlike Rhode Island, where pedestrians walk in, in the same direction, opposite direction of, of bicycle traffic, they do in line with the traffic, and it's, it causes a lot of problems.
Yeah.
They're not aware of the cyclist until you make a noise, and then you startle them, whatever.
You wake them up.
And I, I think the only way to have traffic on the bike path is to indicate to pedestrians which way they should walk, and cyclists which way they should, they should cycle. And it avoids a lot of confrontation and confusion.
Right, you know, we do have those signs. We've had so many complaints in the past when you do paint a, paint a bike path and it's, you know, in a beautiful spot like this, it looks, it does look like a mini road line. It takes away the aesthetics of it.
Alex, that signage over line.
Okay.
Okay, sit down.
The history of the Wild and Seamy River, because this may not actually have been affected the last, the last time we were here. I'm not sure.
Great.
But...
Is that something we can learn about online?
Yeah.
All right, there are all called.
Taunton River, Wild and Seamy.
All right.
Are you talking about the fact that Quikashan was a mill, the main function of the mills in Fall River?
Am I talking about that?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't, but it is.
It is.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought you were getting at.
No, it's not. What I was getting at is, it's a tributary of the Taunton, and the Taunton, because it's a tributary, it's designated as official federal, Wild and Seamy River.
Okay.
However, it also strikes me that there's a difference between the two sections, that the section, oops.
Phase Three.
So Quikashan Street out to Brighton Ave.
Yeah.
Is wilder than the, than the bridges. And I don't know what that means, but I think what it means is that it's, it's really important to, to keep the, the wild part. The last thing I have is, is the route. Now, it hooks up with Britland Park. Now, does it go to Plymouth Avenue?
No. No, the access point from, from the right-of-way, the rail right-of-way out to Plymouth Avenue is, it's a really rough connection. It's very narrow at that section. The actual right-of-way that DOT owns there is very narrow. It's been approached by, by some adjacent, adjacent properties there and been purchased off segments of it down at that end. So the connection, we felt that the connection to Britland Park was A, safer and B, preferable to having bike access off of Plymouth Avenue.
But it doesn't, there's current car path in Britland Park.
Yes, yes. This path connects up to the path that you're speaking of.
Is that the char path that you...
There's one that goes just like this, right down the edge of the ball field, and then there's another one that goes along the river that the city installed, and actually goes the whole length of Britland.
Okay, but the one that goes along, that's what I'm asking. Okay, okay, now I see it.
Yeah.
So that the Phase Two route.
Yeah.
Does not include the city path along the river.
It does not include it, but it connects to it.
But it will connect to it.
Yes.
So that the, so that the, city path along the river will not be the normal route for the bicy, for bicyclists, say, coming from Provincetown. the bicy, for bicyclists, say, coming from Province Town and heading for, it won't be part of the main route.
No.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Sure. Nina wanted to talk about the Wild and Scenic, I think.
Yes, we showed were the three places where we're going to do some planting. And we have a philosophy about that, which we just wanted to say a little bit about. And I, I've done a lot of work on an urban wild in Jamaica Plain near Boston, in Boston. And what we've tried to do there is make where you enter, look as if this is a park, we want you to enter it, and to have that be more, have a more cared-for look than further into the trail, which is wilder. Because we want people to feel that, yes, this is a public area, you're meant to come in, but then after that, I mean, we, frankly, we don't, we don't have the money to have a manicured look for the full mile.
I'm so glad.
And I, I'm, I am, you know, someone who played in the woods for my whole childhood, and I love, I love the wild look. But I also, in an urban place, you want to feel that as a, as a visitor, that this is, this is a place that you're meant to be. So that's where we have the signs and the benches and the daylilies. And then we have wildflower meadow, and then we have footsprawly.
Yes, right. Fabulous for Fall River. But it's part of a much larger project, and as David was talking about Warren, we are part of the South Coast Bike Way Committee connecting from Warren, not Warren, from Swansea to Wareham. We've been working for two years with representatives of all of those communities, I think there's eight of them. And so we see the, the big vision of Providence to Province Town, and as this being an enormous and beautiful piece of that, that's going to, I think, excite and stir people to get more involved in the entire project, the entire vision. And as part of that, with New Bedford, Fall River is applying for a groundwork trust where I think we'll be able to see some of those additional pieces brought into, you know, bringing the neighborhoods, Niagara and Cork and Row and the flint down to the river. And so it'll be expanding within the city, but also connectivity to all the other communities along the south coast.
Great.
So you're doing a lot for us.
Thank you.
We hope you're being so nice to us and everything.
Yeah. Are there any further, further thoughts, questions? All right, well, I'll just thank you again very much for coming out to, to learn about where things are and what we have planned for the future. We really appreciate your support and all your comments and questions. Thanks.
You can't wait for the first show.